Apologies to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're meeting in the hall. Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Hammer?
Here.
Counselor Allen Delaporte? Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Counselor Lindon?
Here.
Counselor Mastin?
Present.
Counselor Nicholson?
Here.
Here.
Okay, everybody's present. The next item on the agenda is we are having a public hearing on ordinance 2024-9 and corresponding confrontatory resolution 2024-11. So Kristen, if you want to go ahead and come up and...
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. We bring this before you for our second reading of an ordinance and our first reading of a resolution. Last time, we agreed that the site that we were targeting is a target eligible, so it's tax abatement eligible. So that says that it is allowable for tax abatement. So this evening is, the ball is in your court, and it's going to be your turn to make a decision. So this is a four individual unit, eight units duplexes on Tennessee Street, but CNR 평민 rentals is looking to do tax abatement on. And so, you know, to the street doesn't very quickly. It took them two years to get that property rezoned. It was rezoned, it was zoned to commercial and landed rezoned R2. And so that happened. And then shortly after that, we approached the council back in March on an executive meeting about this project. And now it's come to fruition. We had a economic development commission meet, and they moved it to the city council. And then last time you met, you agreed that it was eligible for tax abatement. That means that it is allowable on that first of all. So about tonight, we are asking that you consider actually awarding the tax abatement. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
And this is a public hearing, so purposes of anybody in the public wants to have any input or say on the, of this property receiving tax payment. All right, C. None? Would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Totally.
A second.
We've got a motion, a second. So on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or staying? Okay, next item on the agenda. Tonight, we have a special guest. We have Dr. Dion Jackson from DePaul University to come and give us a little bit of information about the Lilly Grant. So if you have a podium.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and good evening to the City Council. I am thrilled to be here with you this evening just to remind you of what you had an opportunity to read about in the demographic or to seek out on social media. And that is the fact that DePaul University, in partnership with the City of Greencastle, has been awarded a $32 million grant in order to advance our Growing Green and Go Together initiative. And as a reminder to the city, there are four project goals for the grant. First, to provide housing for all. Secondly, to strengthen community connections around common spaces and interests. Thirdly, to exemplify a small town that is safe and welcoming to all. And lastly, to improve recreational facilities to support health and well-being. There are four major grant projects within the grant. The major project is the Seminary Square Misuse Development, which will work to transform two city blocks into misused development featuring residential units, commercial space, and parking. Additionally, we have downtown space enhancement, which this component focuses on revitalizing public spaces that facilitate major community events in and around our courthouse square. Thirdly, we proposed and received funding to support a downtown small business incubator fund. And we really hope that this will foster local entrepreneurship and will provide support for small business development and growth in order to contribute to the economic vitality of the City of Greencastle. And lastly, our fourth project component is the Plutnam County YMCA and Matatorium. And this is to build a state-of-the-art YMCA facility with an aquatic center for recreation, exercise, therapy, and community gatherings. We have four intended impacts of this grant proposal. One is to think about when we talk about housing for all, how we have an opportunity to think about space that really attracts workforce. So that's one of the things that Dr. White really charged us as a group to think about, is how we can promote having more space that helps attract and keep and retain particularly workforce individuals within the City of Greencastle. And that is just not only at DePaul, but it's thinking about our education forces relates to our teachers, thinking about those who are in public service, also as firefighters and police officers, thinking about those who just want a change in the ways in which they live in the city. Secondly, improved access to downtown. We really want to see DePaul become a place in which more of our students and faculty and staff are coming through the corridor into downtown throughout the day when we're working, coming out into downtown for lunch, really connecting with the businesses in our area. So thinking about that corridor and the ways that that does that, promoting more connectivity when there are major events such as the music festival or First Fridays, thinking about the farmer's market and all of that. And so really doing those enhancements in those ways. We want better spaces for community events that benefit our entire community. So the, when we talk about the housing opportunity with Seminary Square, preliminary drawings have also included spaces, green space, that can be used for different events and gatherings, both formal and informal, to promote more of that community connection. And then lastly, we really see the pool project enhancing health and well-being within our community. And thinking about well-being as far as particularly for families with younger kids being able to have an aquatic center year-round that they could engage with, or thinking about those who like to do work, to work out for help and have an aquatic center where we can have some water aerobics and other things that might be beneficial for our community. One of the things that we remind you of is that this is only a small portion of the funds. You'll recall that with the Lilly CCC project or the Lilly Endowment, the Growing Green and Go Together project is estimated to be about $109 million. And so the $32 million is just a part of that. And we have worked earnestly throughout the planning phase, when we had the quarter of a million dollar planning phase, to think about the ways that we would do the matching funds to support the work, attract developers that could do the work and all of that. And so the last thing I would mention is that we have a grant executive leadership team that includes myself and Dr. Andrea Young, who are principal investigators through DePaul for the grant, but it also includes Mayor Dunbar, representing the City of Greencastle, and then our city attorney, Lori Hartman. So we represent the four representatives that serve as the executive leadership team. We had our first pre-planning meeting today, and we're excited about the things that will come out into our community. One of the things that I want to leave you with is that we, throughout the grant planning process, have been committed to engaging our community, and that remains our commitment throughout the five years of the grant. Even today, we began talking about when we will have a community-wide kickoff session to kind of tell you where we are with the grant, more details about the grant, and what to expect in the phases coming next. We're anticipating that that kickoff session will occur in October. And so we will have saved the dates going out to talk, to tell you more about what's happening. But we do remain committed to collaboration within this opportunity, this project. And Mayor, I don't know if I have time to take questions. Does anybody have just a quick question?
I'd just like to say thank you for your vision, and thank you for being so community-focused. And the partnership between DePaul and Greencastle is, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be fantastic. And the benefits to the YMCA are going to be amazing for folks in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The only question I have, in Crawfordsville, in the old Elston Bank property, which somebody in here may remember, they have a business incubator program. Did you do any discussions with those folks to see how theirs was working?
So thank you for asking that question. I actually worked for a mayor where I came from, and we actually have a business incubator program. So much of what I know about business incubator programs is actually through the one that we hosted within our city. So one of the things, that's a very good question, though, and one of the things that we plan to do with each of the projects is to take time in thinking about the ways that we're connecting with opportunities such as that before we roll out any program that exists. And so we're excited about engaging. And so if you have recommendations like that or others, feel free to contact us and let us know, because we will be engaging before we roll out these things, thinking about the ways in which we can connect and learn more. Thank you.
And I just want to kind of second, tack on to what Stacy said, just that I couldn't, I really can't say anything better, but also the housing issue will be addressing our housing issue. There we go.
Yes.
The housing component will be addressing our housing issue. That would very much support the community as well as DePaul.
Thank you.
Can I say, I'm just a lackey citizen. Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to tack on with Stacy. I'm a lackey citizen, and I moved here nine years ago, and I lived in Carmel in Indiana for 30 years. This is so awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so exciting. I think almost that's Greencastle in Plutnam County is like a little Carmel without all the expense and hype. And the messiness and the traffic. So don't tell anyone else.
Get one of those, too.
Thank you so much. This is just awesome.
We are very excited.
It's so exciting for the whole city and the county.
We're very excited. And I'll just let you all know, we're really, as an executive leadership team, in the pre-planning phases of the work that we're doing and thinking about the ways that we want to engage our stakeholders, because we have a full range of a leadership team representing many aspects of Plutnam County and Greencastle. And so we will be doing some pre-planning about the ways that we're engaging our community, thinking about some of the baseline things that we need to do with the grant, and then we will be rolling out more information come October. We want to do it right. And for us, much of the community engagement that we did, we know that that's one of the things that was a strength of our proposal. And so we want to continue that work throughout the entire project to make sure that we're doing it right the first time, in listening, hearing, thinking about things that exist within our community and ways that we can learn. So I appreciate the time, Mayor Dunbar, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on is some special requests. So we have several street closures. So the first one is Mike West from TJ, TJV Roofing and Exteriors. Look, you can go ahead and come up. Are you Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And kind of tell us what your project is. And I think he needs to make a small adjustment to his street closure. And you did have these in your packet.
So we were doing the Europe attack, so I could use the home of Walnut Street for like four hours on Monday to be able to bloom up our material. And then the change is I need to have it like two hours closed so we can safely get the material off when they boom down. And then we applied for the six parking spots right there on Walnut. That way our crew back parking, and we can put a dumpster there.
Does anybody have any questions for him about the work on that house? Okay, can I have a motion?
Show me.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody that's standing for first. Okay. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is DePaul University and Joseph Parris. It's getting to be that time of year again, isn't it?
Very close.
Hello, everybody. How you doing this afternoon? My name is Joseph Parris. I work at the Center for Diversity Inclusion at DePaul University. We are having our annual welcome back block party outside of the Center for Diversity Inclusion. We're asking for a street closure on West Hannah Street in between Jackson and Indiana, just on that narrow strip. For the welcome back block party, we'll be having some vendors, we'll be having some food trucks, we'll have a DJ. The DJ will stop at 10 o'clock, and the music will be facing interior to the university, not to the exterior of the university. And we also have invited a few local businesses to come and table to let our students know who's in the community. We're also asking for it to be shut down from 4 to 11:30. That'll, the event will be going from 7 to 10. That 4 to 11:30 will allow us time to set up safely and to tear down safely.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, C. None, can I have a motion?
Eight twenty-two.
Kathy, second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or staying? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Fashion department, we're getting closer this time to the football season. Is our individual from DePaul here about football? There we go. So they have two requests, one for the football games and then for, looks like, Mononville weekend?
Yes. So the only difference is for Mononville, we've asked to extend the time of the closure. So this is our normal request, no differences. So it's from Hannah Street, from Indiana to Jackson, which is where especially our student athletes walk and our parents and our fans as they approach Black Sox Stadium. And then Madison Street, from Hannah to Hill Street. That way we can park buses and have adequate emergency access on the other side of the stadium. So we have three home football games in September, but one of them is a noon start, and then October 26th. So I guess we're doing one at a time, right?
Or they can do, you can choose to do both or all.
So the only difference from Monon is to extend it from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., just to allow us to set up and tear down. But more stuff we have going on that day.
Anyone have questions? I think this is the same as it's always been. Motion?
I'll ask, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or staying? Okay. Thank you for your time. You're good to go. Thank you. Was there anybody else in, I failed to ask after Krista. Was there anybody else in the audience that had any item or anything they wanted to bring up? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is department head reports. They were in your packet. Is there anybody that had any questions or?
Can Jason come up just for a minute?
Yeah, Jason.
Which hats are you wearing?
Parkour hats.
Parkours.
Oh, parkour.
Can you give us a quick update on Phase Two at Robyn Park and where we are in the splash pad and what the rest of the season looks like?
So Phase Two is basically nearly wrapped up. They did some seeding today. They put in more sidewalk. The mayor did a change order with the contractor to extend the sidewalk from the ban shell basically to the west, all the way up to the rest of the sidewalk. So now it's handicap accessible completely from Wilmington Street. The first set of sidewalk is in to the road. The second set of sidewalk will be in probably tomorrow or the next day. It's looking gorgeous. If you haven't been to the park, I recommend you go walk around the park. It's just absolutely night and day from what it was. So the planning phase of Phase Two, I wasn't involved with any of the planning of Phase Two. So I will say that all the planning that they did and all the work they put into it has definitely paid off. It looks so nice now. You will see many projects going on around the park everywhere. There are many different things, and there are many more things that we have on the list to do. It's just a slow process. And the sign went up today, Ballard Parks out by Walmart. So if you go out by Walmart, you will see the new Ballard Parks sign out there. The guys worked on it while I was at my CPI training today. And I was expecting it to just be finished and ready to go, but it's already installed. So I haven't been to Walmart, maybe look and see what they've done, but I'm sure it looks great. Great employees. So the splash pad, they don't have the date, but we failed the regular schedule inspection by the Board of Health prior to the pool closing. So the process after fail that, you have to immediately close your splash pad. Board of Health will call you. So they called and said, hey, you spilled your chemistry water test. We went through, we shocked. The first thing you do is you shock the water. So we followed the process to a T. We sent off the second test. We also failed the second test. So we went back through the procedures that you have to follow for this, because this is our little pump, they put in tons of stuff. That, up to that point, I, you know, was following a very strict procedure because I had not finished my training yet. That's what today, we're done with that. But we went there, so then Monday, the fifth, we went there and drained the reservoir, drained all the water out of the system, treated the reservoir, flushed it, actually put chlorine in and had that all cleaned up, flushed all that neck out of the reservoir, which is in the little pump house, ran water through all of our water features in the splash pad. And then on Tuesday, the sixth, we sent water samples off to test it again. Typically, it's a 48-hour window, so today is 48 hours from Tuesday. And as of just a minute ago, we have not received the test results back. So hoping they will call either still tonight or tomorrow morning and say, hey, we passed. If not, the next step is to actually replace the UV bulb that's in the system. But we followed the procedures. We've followed from the least expensive to the most expensive procedure now, because I would prefer to start out at the least expensive and replace those UV bulbs. I mean, you're supposed to replace UV bulbs on a yearly or bi-yearly basis, but that is the most expensive thing that we can do. So if we can save that, I would prefer not to spend money.
When was last time the UV bulb?
I believe last year, if I'm talking to you.
So it's about time.
It is about time, but it's a limited season on that. So it's not like it was running the entire year. If it was running the entire year and we had a whole year's worth of time on it, but it's only runs since May. So we haven't had a huge season on it. I mean, really, we're two and a half months into that UV bulb working. So hopefully, we're going to get more than 12 months out of the UV bulb instead of, you know, just two. So just hoping that the water test comes back and then we can reopen. All right? And the plan is to keep it open. If we can pass the water test, the plan is to keep it open until the weather falls below the 70-degree standard that you can keep the bulb on. All right?
Thank you. Jason said he took a CPI test today.
Yes.
Didn't clarify that he also passed.
One question, and it was even the math question.
I wasn't going to tell on you.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you honestly, it wasn't, what I was worried about was the math, and I didn't miss the math question. It was a tilted question.
We, we go through the park a couple times a week, and it's amazing how much the new sidewalk just improves everything. And thank you for that change order, because I was hoping that would happen. And when I saw it getting torn up this week, I was so happy. That just changes everything, too.
Yeah, it was like, I don't know, 300 or 400 V. It was the original park sidewalk and everything else the park had been changed. I'm like, no, we've got to do something.
That was great.
We have money in our sidewalk budget, so it's coming out of the edit sidewalk budget.
Well, the, the flow of traffic, once we get cars going back through there, people using the roadways, that's such a huge group.
And the speed bumps are fantastic. They're elevated crosswalk speed bumps, so it's just, it's good for pedestrians, good for cars. It's so nice. And easy on the bike, too, yeah. They're speed cushions, I think is the technical term. Yeah, so they're easier on bikes.
Oh, the wide ones.
Jake, while we're talking about the park, I thought you might say something. But the farmer's market's in the park this weekend, right? Or no, the 22nd. When, so you might, when we have the music test, Eric?
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth?
Twenty-second, twenty-third, right?
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth. Okay, twenty-third, twenty-fourth. The Saturday's Farmer Market, the 23rd. It will be in the city park in the new area that has the nice new concrete that stamp that looks like we're at blocks. And yeah, it's really nice. So Farmer's Park, Farmer's Market will be there on the 23rd. Okay, anybody else have anything else for anybody else?
Okay. We do have, in our packets were the comprehensive plan, several pages.
Survey?
Survey, there we go. And I didn't mind for eight this evening, and it took about 15 to run this, about what it took. So I'd encourage you to do that behind the counter, behind the table here, on the other side of the table.
I was wondering if you could actually do it online and that was like a, I know it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, so I passed out cards. Oh, you have.
We have my card.
It's just offered a Tino. So you can scan the QR code, take it online, and then pass the QR code card onto your friends so they can take it as well.
It's kind of like a demo or something.
No. Eric, would you be able to put the QR code in the van?
I think so, we'll try.
That people can maybe just scan it from that. That, yeah, so we encourage everybody that's, that's close to Greencastle, lives in Greencastle, to take the survey so we can start on the comprehensive plan work. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I guess you guys are free to go home. Thank you, guys. I was going to mention the comprehensive plan that we started.
I'm sorry, sorry, I'm tired.
Comprehensive plan, that's okay. Council, you'll notice at your desk tonight, you have a binder. That is the City of Greencastle 2025 budget. It's the start of that. Mainly our items that the property taxes goes against. Take it to home tonight. If you have a chance, take a look at it. We will have education sessions on the 14th and 15th to go over the store water budget, which I will send out to you, and also the city budget. Those two, we'll start with store water, and then next evening, do the city budget. Will 6:00 work for those times, or did, or was 6:30 in the next?
I thought you said something earlier today. I thought you said 6:30.
I thought somebody said that we needed to start at 6:30, but did I read that wrong?
It might have been me pulling up my calendar, though. I feel like I had something.
Okay, on the 14th, we really need to have it as early as we can have it, because...
Fourteenth, I can come at 6:30, unfortunately.
On 6:00?
Uh, 6:30 on the 14th.
6:30 at 14?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other day, I can do it.
We'll, you probably want to go. Okay, okay. So anyways, you could do six, the earliest you can do events is 6:30 on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Thursday, what's the earliest we can do on that one? Six, 5:30?
I can make it happen.
5:30? 5:30? Okay, so we will do, yeah, we'll do 5:30 on the 15th and 4:30, or 6:30 on the other. So in your packet, the first part, the information is, the information we see from the LGF, I'm sorry, the print's low. So in your packet, the first part, the information is, the information we see from the L G F, I'm sorry, the, the print's low. Then you have a fund report in the next section that tells you where cash balances are. There needs to be a couple of adjustments made, but Caleb will work through that. I went ahead and provided you with the current twenty twenty-four budget. I highlighted that, I think the first page is the original total budget, that's the numbers you want to compare against. You can also see where we, we are up to eight thirty-one of twenty-four. Then we have a proposed budget for twenty twenty-five. With that documentation and then the analysis of the budget, which we will discuss in great detail on those evenings. So that would give you the opportunity to kind of look through it, see where we're at and kind of go forward with that. So I just wanted to kind of get those opportunities here, a chance to look at them.
Is there anything we need specifically to pay attention to while we're thumbing through this?
Every line.
Just kind of go through, you know, we've got a lot of folks that are new, kind of see what kind of light items we have. The budget that is currently in there for those items are all fundable. So we can do that. We might want to make, you know, talk about some things we've added or this or that. So, but everything could easily would be fundable and sustainable. And then of course you'll have questions that have to go, but it gives you an opportunity to kind of see how often it's together.
He gave us no more.
I gave you not one. And like I said, audit will send you out the budget Monday, probably not tomorrow, Monday on the stormwater utility. Okay? And so we'll just talk about that.
So on Wednesday, it'll just be stormwater, we will charge the budget.
Yeah. Mainly stormwater, talk about the, get everybody up to speed on that and then, since we have more time on Thursday to get into the budget. Our very favorite topic, U S two thirty-one. As you can see, we now have pavement down, pavement downtown. I believe the beginning of next week, they're going to start putting the curbs in with sidewalks and all that. So it's coming along. The goal is to get downtown open and Jackson Street back open so we can relieve some of the traffic on the side streets. I don't really know what the timeframe will be, it just depends on how, wherever it goes, how, whether, what, weather is. Right now down here, closer to City Hall, this section from Wilmington to Vine Street. Frontier still has not come out and moved their lines. So Frontier is causing a lot of havoc to where it's been, their inability to get the lines out of there or moved is causing. It's, it's gone up to the higher risk and end up really, really quick because Frontier's a lot of the delay right now. Also, our sewer line caused the delay. The goal is to get this, all of this in the downtown, put back together soon. By at least the end of this year.
Define soon.
Well, let's say before twenty twenty-five.
Yes, there we go.
Soon is a relative term.
Yeah, soon. It's been soon all year. But anyways, yeah, it will get done this year, they tell me. And then we will start this fun again in twenty twenty-five down on Jackson Street. So not as much, not as many things will have to happen on Jackson Street. However, the closure will still have to open or happen at the railroad tracks. So they told me that it should only take a few months, so it'll probably take, after, I, I probably a few months before, so it'll probably be done next November of twenty twenty-five. But it will be nice when it's done. So, but we don't have to switch any water overs, so that's good news.
It'll be more manageable.
It's going to be much more manageable.
So when you're saying open downtown, you're basically talking Vine Street West.
Vine Street to Franklin.
They're paving up to Vine, up to Vine.
Yeah, but if we can get Jackson Street open through there, that will be major.
That will be.
That will be major, so if we can get around.
Keep those, keep those semis turned down at Franklin Street and on the market.
I will tell you, there was a situation today that our Greencastle City Police did pull over a semi truck and he got a nice citation for being on the road. So they are, they are working on doing that. So I just happened to be right there when they did it, so, yeah. So I appreciate. They're all over, but I do want to stress, I do want to stress that our city police are giving citations, so. But we appreciate them.
Sorry if I missed this, did you, when did you say the railroad would be? Is that still this year or next year?
Next year.
Sure, okay.
Yeah. Because sanitation sewer put in behind and now Frontier won't be throwing lines out of the way. It's become a sore needle frontier, so.
Thank you.
What kind of, what kind of a club can Indot hold?
Our Frontier?
Frontier.
I, I don't know. I know they said that they just can't go out there and chop it, you know, so they're working through it. But, but somebody's probably got some authority to get them out here to fix. They came out here and fixed this, but they didn't go out of the street to take care of that. Cause they had Frontier lines out here at City Hall. And all this Frontier work was supposed to be done by the end of twenty twenty-three, so it wasn't even supposed to interfere with any of the, the Endot stuff. But they haven't done that.
I don't know if anyone remembers this, but a few years ago, Avon was working on thirty-six and there was an internet company that wouldn't move their lines. And eventually the city posted on their Facebook, hey, everyone, call this company because they're not doing their part. So at some point, maybe we can just publicly shame them and ask them just to, just to do it.
So, yeah, right now we're, a lot of the delays in Frontier, it's, yeah, I don't know where the lines are landed, they're definitely in the line, so, but that's about all I have.
Counselor should have received an invite to the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three audit exit conference finally. So check your emails for that.
Attention public experience.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Stacy, Stacy already said she would be there.
But it was confusing.
Yes. The women, is it today? No, it already happened now. No, it's twentieth, okay. Got that straightened out.
I was here ten o'clock this morning, but you couldn't have proved me that.
It's because we were busy.
Except I was talking to her, so.
Yeah.
Yes, so Stacy's the only one, well, there's only one counselor required to attend usually.
I tell you, I said I would.
Good job, Stacy.
Stacy has you guys covered, but the other one is.
Yeah, I'm excited about that. I mean, I'm excited about that exit conference because that closes that. I'm like a Denmark record, so. Okay, uh, let's start with Vince. Do you have anything to report?
Wait, I think I went first last month.
Two months.
It's all right, I can do it. A couple of fun things and some, I mean, not serious, but more serious things. I don't know if anyone watched the men's NBA or men's Olympic basketball team today, but it inspired me to put this hat on.
Did you bowl Jupiter?
I did, they came back from eighteen points down at half to win by just a couple of points. Incredible game and with it being the Olympics, I had to represent Team USA. So I'm sorry if it offends anyone, but I needed to wear it.
I wondered where that hat was coming from you.
Yep, yep. The Olympics, I bleed red, white and blue more than any other, any other day of the year. Also, the street closure inspired me. I think Councilman Mastin and I should have some kind of wager about the Monon Bell game. So if anyone from the public has any ideas on what we should wager, I don't know if you'd be open to it, but.
I've lost.
Well, I wasn't thinking financially, maybe.
There are two Wavash alums in here right now.
That's fair, so we, we can talk about that over the years, or over the months. A couple of things, a concerned citizen asked me if the city had any plans on trying to lobby Endot to pay attention to the intersection of two forty, where Walmart exits and Y M C L exit. And the traffic's already pretty bad there with the Y opening next year, it's probably going to get worse. So I just want, I told them, that's, that's Endot, it's a state road, but I'd bring it to the council to.
There's already a light there, what else can they do?
I don't know. Change, change the way, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but.
They'll probably do a timing thing on it when it's open, but right, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. I promised this person I would at least bring it up and make sure we're thinking about it.
I'm sure they're thinking about it.
That, that's probably legitimate, I mean, because if you're trying to turn left, which many people coming out of there will be, in the factories or whatnot, you're going to be there forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you might as well turn right and go all the way down and visit Tina for a while.
If the Y M C A's yoga class gets let out at the same time, it could be a bottleneck. Again, I don't know.
So I think they probably need to have some green arrows or something.
Something, yeah.
They'll have to do a study on that, so, you know, we can call them now, but they're not going to do anything until they'll all get something going. But yeah, that's a good, good idea.
Awesome. We had a, I, I put out a request for people to join a small committee to talk more about Dora. Counselor, Azbel and I were on a call with some business owners and community members and kind of talked through some ideas with it. I'd like to at some point in the next month or so have another meeting with anyone, again, anyone who's interested in participating and talking through that idea. The City of Noblesville's city council and city government has invited anyone from Greencastle to go to their next First Friday where they'll be unveiling their Dora. Obviously, we all like to be here for our First Friday, but their Dora, I believe, is seven days a week, so you don't have to go on First Friday. Just a couple more things, bear with me. I'm happy to announce, I think, Jason left, but I'm pretty sure he confirmed that yesterday Alex Chamberlain from the mural fest went to the park board on my behalf to talk about using some of my edit budget to fund an additional mural at the Mapleberry Park Basketball Court. So I think the park board approved that, it'd be a small portion of my edit budget. I can't unveil or reveal the design, but it's really cool and it'll be on the court itself, adding some life to that area. And my last thing is I started city council office hours. Today was the first one, unfortunately, no one showed up, but I had a really good lunch at Wally's. It's about being available, it's not about people showing up. But on September nineteenth at Pizza King, October seventeenth at Wally's, November twenty-first at Pizza King and December nineteenth at Wally's. I'll keep showing up and hopefully some people do too. It's eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty on those days. Sorry, that was a lot.
Well, I would just say Vince, being there by yourself, you were good company, weren't you?
The people around me were nice, they just weren't there to be with me.
That's a good one. The only thing I have about the first ward is Shadow Lawn and I don't think it managed to make any promises or anything, but it'll be hard.
They are coming next week to start cleaning that up. I'm hoping Monday, because the weather's supposed to be nice Monday. But yeah, they should start bringing equipment in next week to get that taken care of.
I noticed they did put some extra rock in, but it still keeps.
They put some rock in, ready to load.
Yeah, our street department's been maintaining that the best they can.
Yeah, they know all they can do, but you know, it's, it's only thing I've heard from constituents is channel, channel, channel.
Yeah, that's good. They're coming Monday. They're doing, they'll work on Shadow Lawn, more cord draper, and then they'll start on our city streets. Vince, Eric and I were at the park board meeting, they did approve it.
Perfect.
I think it's a great use of the edit funds.
Yeah, absolutely. I wish I could have been there, I had meet the teacher night.
Well, that's more important.
This is this year?
Well, no, but new teacher, new room.
Right, exactly, I can remember, can I remember the first girl this year?
No, no, he's three.
He's three.
No, for my son, yeah, yeah, no. Shelby handles meet the teacher at her, at Teasy on the road. This is for our son at, at New Patace.
Okay, that, okay, there you go.
Yep.
I had more, obviously not.
Fair enough.
National Night Out, I know we have a lot of community people out there, I know they're successful, so much goes into planning that behind the scenes. And we're so fortunate that our community's committed to it. I know the fire department was there, the police department was there, a lot of you were probably there. And it's just a real nice event for our local schools and proud community moment, yeah.
Can you hear me okay? I had a constituent from Madison Street reach out and I know some of you were CC'd on that email. But they were talking about in the two thirty-one project, once they closed the railroad crossing. She's concerned about the trucks that will be routed onto Fraser Street to Madison. And she would like for all of us to drive that area. There's two blocks to see the road cuts because there's road cuts from the trucks right now. Two near the storage facility north of the Eagles and one in front of the residence at eight hundred Madison in front of the Castle Mobile Homeport. So she'd like us to go and see that. The regular traffic, she said, has not deteriorated the area, but her concern is that weight of the tracks will break up the pavements surrounding these cuts. So she just wants us to be aware of that. And if there's anything that we can do to prevent this before the railroad is closed by filling the cuts with asphalt.
So that is the, it was Madison Street, correct? That is the official detour, so Endot will come in and take care of that. And any damage to that, Endot will be answer.
That's right, that's right. It's correct, I mean, that's right, I'm always in the cut of Madison.
Yeah, that's the detour now. It goes all the way down to that.
Official detour.
Official, unofficial, the unofficial detour, that's the official detour.
The official, unofficial. But that'll be in twenty twenty-five, so we have.
But we have it now.
But we already have it now.
We have it now.
But right now, the trucks are really not using it because they're coming all the way around the street. Next year, they'll have to use it.
Yeah, everybody's using whatever, but yes, next year they'll have to use that again or they're not getting it.
Right.
Was she asking it to be like fixed, some of the stuff fixed now, not after?
Now, before the trucks start coming, because she felt like the, the weight from the trucks is the one to damage the road.
Is Endot wanting to do, to do that before?
Well, it's now the official detour now, so if they go out there and see that it's bad, they'll fix it.
They'll fix it before, next spring.
So I'll let her know. And then also, again, I do this every month, but I want to thank our police department for doing everything they do. They've been, you know, at every event in the community, they're working hard. And if you can just thank them when you see them for the hard work that they do in the community. I know that everyone appreciates being acknowledged for the things that they do. Because, you know, those of us who are moms, we appreciate, you know, and the kids say thank you and, and all the nice things. But as a police officer, I don't need a lot of thanks for the job that they do and it's a very difficult job. So if you could all just kind of reach out and wrap your arms around them and, well, that, you know.
That's true.
Pass on that.
Yes. But just thank them for a job like that because they do a lot for us here.
I thought you said when the department had to hear, but I noticed that the, and I know before that too, that the fire department hosted a lemonade stand for Isaac one seventeen house. And there were several around the community and I think that was, they were very successful. And that's a, that's a going to be meeting of a need that's not being met currently in Butler County and other surrounding areas too. So I just wanted to mention that and thank them for doing that.
Yesterday I drove north out of town and was surprised to see this doesn't directly affect the city council, but it might, but they're moving dirt at Old Hickory.
I saw that.
I don't know what's going in there, but that, you know, the rumor says that could be housing, maybe. And I mean, they have big piles of dirt.
The other thing, the other thing I wanted to mention was I, Monday, you didn't bring it up, but I think part of our discussion in the budget is going to be about all the bond road.
Just friends and gentlemen.
Road in general.
We'll have a discussion about roads.
Okay.
And how much we're budgeting for that. Our engineer will have some information to me by next week on roads. We have lots of roads in the.
Lots of roads.
Lots and lots and lots of roads in here.
None of them were very good shape.
And they all cost lots of money. So, yeah, we are going to have a little bit of a discussion on that. I will tell you that we are, we did cement for community crossings on that. And so for Washington Street, down in front of the high school, the reason we did that is because community crossings, we need to take advantage and every time we can take advantage. So we had basically that work ready to go. So that's what we put in, it was a road that we can get the whole road done for the money that we can get with the community crossings plus our match. So that's why that one was picked, not that it's any worse than any of the others, we have some of the worst. But at the time, we got to get as many dollars rolling in on roads as we can, so it was ready to go, so we went ahead and cemented it. So like I said, it may not be the, the worst road in town, but it was one that we could.
You could apply for.
We could apply for, we had a really, really good chance of going because I want to try to get a community crossing, like two of them every eighteen months if we can.
Yeah, I, I asked Linda about it because, I said, how often can we apply? She said, it's every six months, next one's in Ja, in January, the next one's. Yeah, I asked Linda about it because, I said, how often can we apply? She said, it's every six months. The next one's in January, the next one's in July. And I know we did apply for nearly that many in the past.
So we should be able to get two every 18 months, if not every time. So, but you got to have a lot of things done, ready to go, because as soon as we get that, we got to have the job ready to go in four months. So it's a quick, quick, quick process.
Not to ask it done in four months, we just have to have.
No, but we have to have it under contract and ready to go, so that this one here should be ready to go as soon as spring gets here.
And how soon will we hear on this, once the community?
I think September. So we'll know here pretty soon, yeah.
Yeah, within a month, a month and a half.
And then also, this is the year that our city engineer goes out and analyzes all the roads. So they'll come back with a new list of which ones have maybe deteriorated more and all that. So a lot about roads, and there is extra money put in the budget for roads, so we'll talk about roads.
Well, speaking of roads, I know, sorry, I can't believe I forgot earlier, but we did get a very nice call this week. Andrew's team had gone out and cut a tree, cut a tree that had fallen in the middle of the road. And so the constituent called and just, you know, said thank you, and they did a great job. You know, they came out, I think it was pretty late in the evening, but they're right out there, got it taken care of, and they were nice enough to call and show their appreciation. Yeah, we don't get those very often.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the job for our meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We've got a motion second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody who opposed or thing. Okay, that's fast. Mark, are you doing climbs tonight?
Yep. I will need somebody to do the next one if I won't be here. All right, start out with the easy ones and the big ones. About the first one, the pensions, eighteen thousand seven eighty-three seventy-two. Payroll, six hundred sixty-four thousand two forty-four twenty-seven. Direct payables, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand nine oh five seventy-three. And general regular accounts payable, eighty-five thousand one forty-seven oh six. So on the direct, the big one, one million dollar one. Let's see, we've got thirty-nine thousand and ten dollars roughly to BIS Digital for the balance, fifteen percent balance on all these tech upgrades. That's probably, we understand what all they did, but we had a claim last month also for that one. Sure, I do remember something. I don't remember the number, not sure it was. And then we have a line, civil engineering. We have about six different line items here. We have a regular June of twenty-four monthly engineering work of forty-five hundred forty-seven fifty. We've got Roban Phase Two inspection from June of fifty-three hundred and thirty-five. We have camp, yeah, Campus Link Western Extension for June of twenty-five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Campus Link Western Extension for January of fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. And Roban Phase Two for February of fourteen thousand four thirty-two eleven. And then twenty-four thousand one forty-five for Washington Street reconstruction move in. Now, all those total, I believe, eighty-eight six eighty-nine sixty-one. We also have Alton Wits, which is a wellness center engineering for March and May for fourteen seven twenty-six seventy-five. And another seven thousand seventy-seven seventy-five for the month of April, for a total of twenty-one thousand eight hundred four fifty. They jump around here, that's why I'm kind of looking around, so. And then we've got some other large ones, El, Elvett, Elvettus, probably butchered that, Community Center for June, eighteen thousand two sixteen. Owl Preconstruction, we have two of those as well. Yes, we've got for payment number three was twenty-five thousand four eighty-six eighty-eight. I believe that was for June. No, that's for July also. First for weeks of July, and then we have another one for the remainder of July, maybe into early August, for twenty-five thousand nine twenty-six fifteen, a grand total of fifty-one thousand four thirteen oh three. We've got Foyt's Construction for Roban Park Phase Two, partial payment number one, two hundred and twenty-one four eighty-five thirty-two. Let me find the other one. They're also on here. There it is. For Phase Two, payment number two for two hundred and forty-seven eight thirty-five ninety-three, grand total four sixty-nine three twenty-one and a quarter. And then we got Conexo for Washington Street Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction out here from Divine Street, May for a hundred eighty-three thousand six ninety-two eighty-two. That's all that they have. Then we've got Three Kings Electric for eighteen six seventy-seven, which is downtown lighting. I believe that was the conduit for the road project, like I said, eighteen thousand six seventy-seven. We've got a ten percent overage overrun or whatever from Locust Street from last year, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. That's pretty much it. We've got normal utility bills and cell phone bills and, you know, Republic for the trash service and what have you. Those are pretty much the highlights of that, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand nine oh five seventy-three. On the direct payables, much smaller number, trying not to spend too much time on. Let's see, we've got mowing, several mowing contracts. We've got fourteen hundred and forty dollars to Double H. There's somebody else over here somewhere, mower. And we had two Dixie Chopper mowers bought from the cemetery department. There was a couple, there was some small, another small item on there, but nineteen thousand three thirty-seven ninety-nine. I think the, at least nineteen thousand plus dollars were the two Dixie Chopper mowers. We also repaired Kubota at the park for thirty-three hundred ninety-one dollars, also in Humphreys. So their total was twenty-three thousand eight sixty. And one turnout coach, can you believe this? Municipal ER Services, eighteen hundred dollars from the fire department. So very expensive. Then we've got thirteen holsters and a uniform jacket from Nelson's Uniform for nineteen thousand sixty-one dollars and thirty, sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. Cool chemicals from eighteen, ten thousand eight twenty-seven seventy-seven, plus repairs and also CPO training that was attended earlier today. And I think that's pretty much it. So I think I've got pretty much covered, unless somebody has any questions, I'll watch you read them.
Okay, Mark, you've been.
I'll make a motion that we accept, accept the claims as presented.
Can you take a second? I'll take a second. They can't answer them? Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Stand?
Stand.
Stand.
Okay, so we've got two standing, because I think their employers were in the lines. Okay. We're going to move on to old business. We have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing an economic development target area for the proposed CNR Quality Rentals LLC duplex projects. So we had this last month on the agenda for that, so if there's no discussion on that, we can make a motion for that, or anybody having a discussion? Or you can make a motion, we'll have a discussion.
I think I said Black Peace last one.
Motion? Are we going to motion and then discuss? We can. I'll make a motion that we pass this tonight. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion second on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine. Do we have any further discussion on this?
And I just want to clarify that this one is just declaring in the target area.
Target area.
The eligibility.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody that opposes?
Aye.
And so we have two, okay. Okay, so on new business now, we have resolutions twenty twenty-four dash eleven, a resolution granting real tax abatement and economic development target area created by ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine, and recommended tax deduction for CNR Quality Rentals LLC. So Kristen, do you want to go ahead and?
Absolutely, thank you. This is the portion where we are actually requesting the tax abatement to be approved. So residential tax abatement is somewhat new to the city of Greencastle. There was two that were approved last year, and one has almost been completed from that one, and the other one is going to get ready to get underway here this fall. So tenure is very successful. So we've come before you again this spring to request tax abatement for our new project, eight-unit duplex to, to be abated. And last year, they requested ten years, so the Harcourts are requesting ten years as well. However, it is up to the discretion of the city council to approve any amount of time that they want. It used to be that there were standardized tables for that, but the DLGF has released all of that from the state legislature. So now it is up to the discretion of the governing body to approve any kind of abatement that you see necessary for that. So it's pretty much what it is.
So do we want to start off with a discussion on this, or I can read the ordinance, and then we'll have a discussion or resolution? Go ahead and read it. Okay, a resolution granting real company tax abatement and economic development target area created by ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine, and recommended tax deductions for CNR Quality Rentals LLC. Whereas the state of Indiana, state of Indiana specifically IC six dash one point one dash twelve dash seven, provide for the creation of economic development target, target area within the corporate limits of the city of Greencastle, Putnam County, Indiana, where the general purpose of providing property tax deductions to encourage private development and redevelopment of areas which have become undesirable or impossible for normal development and occupancy because of lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvement, or character of occupancy, age, oscillance, standard building, or other factors that impair values to prevent a normal development of property or use of property. Whereas pursuant to applicable laws of the state of Indiana, the city, or the Greencastle Common Council may create an economic development target area due to adoption of an ordinance. Whereas the need exists to establish an economic development target area in order to encourage private development and redevelopment in the city of Greencastle, Putnam County, Indiana. Whereas after advertising for and holding a public meeting on August the eighth, twenty twenty-four, the Greencastle Common Council adopted ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, creating an economic development target area. Whereas CNR Quality Rentals LLC proposed a development and construction of four two-unit duplexes by investing approximately one point two million in real estate improvements. CNR Rentals LLC seeks a tax deduction pursuant to IC six dash one point one dash twelve point one. Whereas the state of benefits form SB one RE has been submitted to the common council on August eighth, and that such statements of benefits with attachments is attached here and marked exhibit A. And whereas the city, the Greencastle Common Council pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana does not hereby find that the estimate of value of the residential development is reasonable for projects of this nature. Those projects meet the criteria and provides benefit to the community as an investment in an economic development target area, that any other benefits about which information was requested are benefits that can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed residential development, and the totality of benefits is sufficient to justify deduction. Now, therefore, it may result that the common council of the city of Greencastle does recommend a deduction assessed values for a period of, and we can discuss that. As a result of the real estate investments you set forth in IC dash six dash one point one dash twelve point one dash four. And then again, we would have an abatement schedule, which after we decide what that would be, we can set forth. So, and then it's the signature lines.
And I would just like to introduce, Kristen Rochelle Harcourt are in the audience, and they are the ones who are doing the development of the project. And then their attorney, Ms. Jessica Boggs, who is here to answer any questions on their behalf. So if there are any questions that arise.
First, you read something that's.
Right, now.
In the last, in the last where I said, does now hereby find.
Oh.
And you read it does not.
Okay.
That was thirty-four.
Sorry, I just read through it. Which one is?
You're fine.
Okay. That's fine.
Usually if there's a stumble or a misread word, it's a little consequence. That one is not.
Which one was that?
In the last where I said.
Oh, where is it now?
Does now.
Oh, does now, boy.
Does now or does not? Yeah.
Does now, sorry.
Jeff, can you explain the timeline and why you were coming to us now when some of the work has already been completed? Because that's kind of, I think, the HIPAA, well, one of the things, the challenges.
Because I understand that there was a significant delay in getting one of the earlier committees together to make a decision. The name escapes me, but that was all the cities in. And I think the, my clients were in, had to make a business decision to go forward with a part of their project due to costs, and maybe gave away part of their leverage to do so. But the project's only partially completed, so the only half done. And whether they go forward with the other half depends a lot upon what happens here tomorrow.
And I'm just going to piggyback off of that and say that we came before you in an executive session in March. And for Indiana Code, you have to have that happen development commission, which was unfilled at the time. And so the mayor ended up filling that, but not until July, so that when they met in July or June. So when they met, then we were able to bring it before city council. But they have to give recommendation on that, and so it was held up because of that.
We had to add several appointments to that, and then we have them together, and then they could not meet. Nobody could, you know, we were in vacation time and stuff like that, so that probably delayed an extra month, so. It's a, it's a committee that only meets what, once every?
Whenever, like this?
Whenever.
Yeah, whatever. I mean, it's not, it's not.
Every time for the last year.
Yeah.
Or twice a month.
But it's, it's not a committee that meets every month. It's not a committee that meets every month when we have this situation. And there were some folks that were not being served anymore, and so there was just getting some people together to do it, yeah.
What was the holdup for the two years, though? I mean, that's what caused, when, you know, that's the time that I think we're looking at, is two years. Talking about a month or two, you know, it came to that middle of March that we met three months later, so. And it came to the blank commission about that same time, I think. You remember when I asked the blank commission, they, they'd word, what's that, or like?
I don't think they were going to commit to the build. I mean, they could commit to the build until a rezon happened, so they were, you know, so they were exploring their options once rezon happened, but they knew as soon as rezon happened that they were going to get stuff ordered. So I think it was just, it was a timing thing, but then, you know, I think they learned late in the game about the eligibility for tax abatement. So once rezon happened, they were looking to do whatever it took to start, but they wanted to do tax abatement as well, once they learned about that. And so that's where they got. They weren't going to start tax abatement in the middle of a rezon. If they didn't get awarded rezon, then that doesn't make any sense. So they were waiting for rezon to happen, and then once rezon happened, they immediately contacted me and we started work on it.
No, but what that does is tells me that they're acting on a motivated self-interest. And I say, bless them, you know, because that's how we've built and developed this community and every other community, you know, by entrepreneurs risking their capital, hoping for a reward. And the idea that nobody does anything unless somehow or another, some level of government incentivizes them, I just, I just find immoral.
Right.
From an economic standpoint.
So everybody who requests incentives does it for their own. So, everybody who requests incentives does it for their motivated self-interest, and I think that's unfair to characterize the Harcourts as.
No, I'm not, no, 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 no. You keep in mind, and I told you this, yesterday or Tuesday, this has nothing to do with.
I just, but, but what you're saying is, they've already, they've already built things without requesting anything, it's just because of the package, so, it's not just, it's not just, we'll do it if we get incentives, they've done it already.
They are acting in their motivated self-interest, which is.
As, as to the two that were approved last year.
Should do, and I, and I applaud them for it, you know, I, I just can't understand why nothing is going to happen without some type of, of a government incentive, I, I just find it suspicious argument in principle, not in the specifics. I don't care that it's half-built, you know, I don't care if it's fully leased, I don't care about any of that, I don't care who it is, it can be the Lord himself sitting over there, and I would feel exactly the same way about this, as a guy who's developed and has risked his capital.
David, these kinds of rent, residential rental and, uh, abatements are common throughout other parts of the state, not common here, but common as close as Hendrix and Newberry County, uh, so really, they're not asking for anything more than any other developer would on a statewide basis.
Well, I don't know exactly how common the other, because I don't know how long, and, and you may be able to tell me this, or you may, the statutes changed so the residential abatement at this small of a scale would actually be eligible for abatement. I don't think that's been too terrible at all, but I don't.
So, two thousand, two thousand and twelve, I think, was the trust residential tax agreement, before that it was incentives for industrial abatement, but two thousand and twelve, and they did not identify a scale or a size, it was just yes or no on the residential.
Yeah, I was on the original economic development commission, like nineteen eighty-four.
Twelve years, it's been implemented, but we, we've only utilized this tool for one year. Other communities also might not award tax abatement because they have deeper pockets than what Greencastle has, and so they are able to offer incentives at a different level, they can offer economic development income tax dollar incentives, they can offer deal posing fund incentives, they can offer project posing deal incentives, they offer different things, um, and in our community, we don't have the balance in our budget to be able to offer any additional cash incentives, and so the only tool we have at our disposal right now is either residential tax abatement or residential TIF, and so, uh, on a, uh, project this scale and this size, uh, we felt like tax abatement, uh, was definitely the better news, we wouldn't do TIF, um, that is too onerous, so, um, we're only using the tools at our disposal, and that is why we were coming before you to request a tax statement, because we can't offer a, hey, if you build eight units, we're going to give you a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know why we would.
Ten thousand dollars, you know, whereas, whereas, and, uh, we've got a local builder that's building up in a, in a different locale, and their mayor is like, what do you need? What do you need in order to get it done? We'll get it for you.
Well, you told me that, but I, I.
Well, David, I'd like to answer that one, and I don't mean to stick over your, I apologize, but, let me answer your question, why wouldn't you? You know, when I looked at the, uh, I serve on the community foundation, uh, and, and when they did their needs assessment, in the top five needs identified by our community, your constituents was housing, so that is a need in our community, whether, on whatever level you want to put it, um, and I understood from other Realtor friends, that we had folks that we'd really like to keep here, who can't find the, the right kind of housing here, and so who they leave for Hendrix, or they leave for, for Play, for Picket County, um, so why would you do it? You'd do it to address a self-identified need of your constituents, uh, for housing.
If I, if I could just make a comment on that, uh, I think I saw this at last month's meeting, but I knew you weren't here, um, the National Low Income Housing Coalition says that Indiana's housing is overbuilt at families who make eighty percent or more of the median income, uh, but there's a severe need for families who need affordable housing, and that's something that was really important to me last, I think I mentioned in executive session, last meeting, um, I feel like, you did mention the leverage is, is kind of gone at this point, um, two of them are built, but if, you know, first of all, I think if we're talking about ten-year, I'm not comfortable with ten-year at all, uh, but if we're going to talk about having a negotiation, which this is negotiation, um, I'd really love to see some affordable units, um, baked into this.
Well, my folks have, um, addressed that concern, and we're prepared to offer a cap on, uh, on a unit at a thousand dollars for rent, um, and do that in a public setting, um, so that, um, and we know that you won't renew these on a year-to-year basis, and if they do not keep their word, they're going to get some more questions, um, so we would offer that, uh, and, you know, frankly, for those of you all who go through, Rochelle, they're very civic-minded, they are deeply involved with many community organizations, 4H, um, youth sports, they contribute to Music Fest, which I believe the city has a big interest in, and have for years, um, and when I asked them to total up the amount of contribution, charitable contributions they made over the last eleven years, it was a six-figure number, and frankly, I felt embarrassed, I haven't done anything like that, um, so, in addition to capping the rent on one of the units, they're willing to contribute, uh, to purchase a named sponsorship at the Y, uh, up to five thousand dollars, so they get back, uh, in more than one way.
In talking with our local employers, uh, we hear that many people work in Greencastle, um, many people that work in Greencastle like to live in Greencastle, and that's kind of where I'm coming from, I believe our city needs housing at all price points. We've got the housing study that'll be coming to us in twelve months, which hopefully will confirm this and give us a better idea what our, our path is going forward, but, I mean, to me, this is possibly eight new families or individuals paying local income taxes, eight new families possibly providing children, uh, students to our schools, which indefinitely absorb more students, uh, eight more families supporting our local businesses, so, I just feel like if people want to live in Greencastle and they cannot find, uh, apartments or rental units, then I feel like it's, I mean, my responsibility as a councilperson, and this is just my opinion, to do everything I can to make that happen, and I would be very open to a five-year, I think a ten-year is too much of a leap out of the gate for us, because we're just kind of testing the water. Um, I love the cap on the rent, I didn't realize that, so, you know, my thoughts are, I would make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, tax abatement before the five-year term.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, I think we will do a roll call vote on this.
Of course. They have more roll positions, they have time to talk.
We can start over here.
Yes. Soon, soon we'll be able to do up there.
Yeah, pretty soon, pretty soon, uh, we will, it will be just a lot of trying, but it'll appear up there, so we won't have to do a roll call, but since we're.
What about five years on the two remaining, moving us to be developed?
I'm five years for all four, I mean, I don't, I don't get that they've started it already.
So, it's a discussion item, so.
I do think it's important as a, as a city, we maintain our leverage in the future, um, I, I'm not saying we change anything right now, but, you know, who, who's built a duplex in the last twelve months, who's going to come knock on the door now, so I do think it's, it's a fair point that the councilman brings up, um, but we, we need to have some leverage in the future, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
Okay, remember any of that?
Question.
Okay, we've got a phone question, so you can start the roll call. Counselor Eery?
Yes.
Counselor Nicholson?
I'm, I forgot. Uh, yes.
Counselor Mastin?
No.
Counselor Singleton, who has white cell phone at this point in the day?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, Counselor Adolph?
Yes.
Yep, Counselor Hickworth?
Yes.
And Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven passes with tax abatement for five years.
Thank you, thank you. And we will, we will be in touch in future years for the compliance base, and we will hold them accountable to their, their contention that they will provide that thousand, and we will keep a list that of community involvement, and I think moving forward, we didn't start with it last year, but we do it for resident, or for industrial, that we will keep a list of, of the community contributions that are made as well, because that helps you guys determine for what kind of community member they are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're right, there is a woman standing, here is a couple.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't really care about, I don't want to ever hold anybody hostage, you know, and doing their, the work that they do, you know, you, well, you got to contribute to so-and-so, you got to do that, you, I don't, I don't believe in that, you know, that's, that's anti-market as well, and market god, you may be too young, but I did it at Benrode, you know, and.
I'm not, Benrode's a boy.
So, uh, you know, I just say, you rise and you fall on, on what you got here, what you got here.
Everybody sign up.
And I wish them well, honest to goodness, I, I don't even really know this.
I, I don't.
But I wish them well, I just don't mind the idea of subsidizing.
Okay, so that ends our business.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion, sir, sir.
I salute.
Second.
There was a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm like Ben, so I want to go home.
Don't, you got to wait, wait till you sign this.
They're all over now, it's three AM in London.